Good evening. This is the Tuesday, November 13th, 2018 Board Meeting. The Board of Education has been in closed session since 6:00 for the items listed on the agenda. And we have seven board members present and we will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we get to start off with the best part of our job, which is to honor some people in our district. So I'm going to actually go up and do the Shining Star recipients. So we have two Shining Star recipients, which are people in our district that we would like to recognize for their outstanding service and a job well done. So the first one is Ramon El Cantar, a custodian at Hawthorne. And he was nominated by Principal Tim Riordan and Elizabeth Franks. What? Oh, oh yeah. Come on up. You can stand right here. That way we can look at you. So Ramon truly exemplifies the true meaning of going above and beyond, dedicating his work each and every day to the students at Hawthorne. When a special needs student was having difficulty carrying a lunch tray from the lunch line to her table, her teacher looked to find adapted lunch trays with handles to assist. When she was unable to find anything that met her needs, she conferred with the occupational therapist, who then asked Ramon if he had extra cabinet handles in the basement, not really knowing what would be done with them. An hour or so later, Ramon came into the classroom with an adapted lunch tray that he had built with handles he had found on an old toy kitchen in the basement. This student can now independently carry her lunch tray from the lunch line all the way across the gym to her lunch table and set it down completely unassisted. Although this may have seemed like a small undertaking for Ramon, it was a big moment for the student and will have a lasting impact on her for years to come. So Ramon, thank you. So I just want, you know, take a minute and be congratulated and recognized by all the board members, but thank you for the service you do to our schools every day, our kids. And then come back over because I have a certificate for you right here. Next is Chris Malave, and not here, okay, but I'm going to read it anyway. So this is an educational assistant at Sandberg. And they were nominated by Jason Vanderplough, Jeff Gale, and Linda Farinbacher. Each and every day, Chris demonstrates an above and beyond demeanor and attitude, whether it is moving an immobile student from a wheelchair to calming a student who is reacting to a situation. His work is unique with the students he serves, whether it is in toileting, feeding, changing students, helping them with functional life skills or academics, he is respectful, dignified, and exemplary at what he does and who he is. His job is extremely important to meet the unique and sometimes complicated needs of the students. He always looks for and assumes what is best for students. He works well with a large team of teachers and assistants. He makes everyone better through his commitment to those who need him. So he is being awarded the Shining Star, and thank you to him for his service to our students. And I believe next we have Those Who Excel.
And all the Those Who Excel recognition recipients, come forward. Heather Conrad Fisher, PTA, Allison Megan, John Monique, Anna, Michelle. There you go. If you just line up.
Every year, the ISBE recognizes people who, in their own role, promote education in their community. And they have this program called Those Who Excel. And it requires that you be nominated by a leader in your district or your community. It's sent to a committee that's made up of representatives from all aspects of education. And they make these awards annually for people who do so well. And we are fortunate to have these people and groups here in Elmhurst who have won these awards and have really contributed to what we have that's so special in District 205. So I'm going to read this. Whereas the Illinois State Board of Education annually recognizes and honors individuals and groups who have made outstanding contributions to public and non-public elementary and secondary education in the fall of each year at the Those Who Excel Awards Banquet and Program. And whereas on October 20, 2018, in Bloomington-Normal, Illinois, at the Awards Banquet, the following District 205 staff and community members were recognized for their efforts by receiving the awards of merit and recognition in seven categories at the 44th Annual Illinois State Board of Education Those Who Excel Program. Heather Bowler, classroom teacher, Bryan Middle School, Award of Merit. Conrad Fisher School, PTA, Team Category. Conrad Fisher Elementary School, Award of Excellence. Allison Doniger, I have trouble with the name every time. Yeah, I've been practicing all week. Community Volunteer, Award of Merit. Megan Enke, did I get that right? There we go. Early Career Educator, Sandberg Middle School, Award of Merit. John Monique Manuel, Educational Service Personnel, Conrad Fisher Elementary School, Award of Excellence. Anna Robbins, Student Support Personnel, Madison Early Childhood Center, Award of Recognition. Michelle Thompson, Administrator, well, Principal, Emerson Elementary School, Award of Merit. Whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to Elmhurst Community Units, Unit District 205, to Bryan and Sandberg Middle Schools, to Conrad Fisher and Emerson Elementary Schools, and Madison Early Childhood Center, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express deep appreciation and congratulations to these staff and community members for their outstanding accomplishments. Thank you. So I have one for each of you. So if you want to file past me, have one. Congratulations, and then accept the congratulations of everybody on the board and administration. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Well done.
For the team.
For the team. Thank you.
For the team. Thank you.
For the team.
Congratulations.
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 Upside down.
I love it.
It's my graduation.
I know.
For this final honor of this evening, our roles are a bit reversed, I would say. Typically, it is the board's duty to recognize the accomplishments of our teachers, staff, students, and our volunteers. However, District 205 would like to honor our own board members this evening and their significance to the community by proclaiming November 15th, 2018, as Board Member Appreciation Day. Would you join me in a round of applause? Here are just a few of the duties that school boards like our own District 205 Board of Education handle. They represent diverse communities and represent the community's expectations. They preserve our buildings and grounds. They make wise usage of tax dollars. Adopt policy. Monitor the district's performance. Provide leadership and set a shared vision for achievement. They employ the superintendent and volunteer countless hours. And with that, the proclamation reads, whereas decisions made by school board members directly impact the quality of life in their communities, placing them as the front line of American democracy, therefore be it resolved by Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 that we proclaim November 15th, 2018, as School Board Members' Day as a way to honor those citizens who devote their time and energy for the successful education of our children. Congratulations and enjoy your day. And typically, we make you go around and shake hands, but if you would stand briefly, and would you give them one more round of applause?
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comments. The board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens or representatives of other public agencies. And we ask that when the timer goes off at three minutes, you wrap up your comments, please. So first on the list is Diane Lands Kouts.
Good evening. My name is Diane Lands Kouts, and I'm a mother of two children in the District 205 schools. I'm also the lead of the Moms Demand Action Group in Elmhurst. I'm here to speak out against what is being referred to as Resolution Two on Student Safety and Protection at the upcoming Illinois Association of School Boards Conference. The resolution states the association will lobby for legislation which would allow local school boards the option of arming administrators, faculty, and/or staff. Our school buildings are meant to be places of sanctuary, safety, and learning for our children. The presence of guns at school adds an unpredictable element that puts educators and students at risk and adds even more safety concerns on top of the heavy responsibilities already placed on our teachers. Although I understand the frustration and emotions that would lead someone to think arming teachers would be a good idea, especially in our downstate Illinois rural communities, it is critical that we let data drive this decision. There is absolutely no evidence that arming teachers will make schools safer. Law enforcement officers are extensively trained to handle the chaos and dynamics of an active shooter situation. Civilians are not. Research and data shows that a teacher with less training is highly unlikely to hit an active shooter. Arming teachers also ignores the risks and consequences of bringing guns onto school grounds. If teachers and our employees carry guns into schools, the firearms could easily be obtained by students, and we could expect an increase in both tragic unintentional shootings as well as teen suicide. America's teachers, safety experts, and law enforcement oppose arming teachers. Multiple teacher and PTA organizations across the country oppose allowing guns in schools. The AMA and many local law enforcement agencies have gone on record opposing arming teachers. Here in Illinois, the Illinois Federation of Teachers passed a resolution in March of this year, once again, opposing arming teachers. Instead of arming teachers, we can save lives by raising awareness and supporting the implementation of new safety laws, like the red flag law that passed in Illinois this past spring. This law allows family and law enforcement to intervene by petitioning a judge to remove firearms from a home when dangerous warning signs are exhibited. Research shows that in at least 42% of mass shootings, the attackers showed dangerous warning signs prior to the shooting. Educating the district's staff and community about the new resource will empower families and law enforcement to intervene before a shooter arrives at a school door. We can all agree that something needs to be done to reduce gun violence and protect the lives of our children at school. School safety experts, teachers, many in law enforcement, and our medical professionals all agree that arming teachers and bringing more guns into our schools is not the answer. This is not about politics. This is not, it is the safety and the life of my child and your child is not a political issue. Therefore, I would urge the board to oppose any effort that would arm teachers or staff, including this upcoming resolution on student safety and protection, not just for the safety and security of Elmhurst, but for the safety of all the children across Illinois. Thank you again for your time tonight and for all you do for our children in our community.
Hi. My name is Linda Lunt. I'm an Elmhurst resident who has sent two children through the District 205 schools from K through 12. In all of that time, I have never found a need to attend, much less speak at, a board meeting. I'm also a preschool music teacher and a choir director, missing my rehearsal this evening to be here because I feel that this is an important issue. I'm here to encourage the board to vote against IASB Resolution Two. Others here are speaking and also have emailed about the safety of guns in schools, and I did write an email to the district on that topic. However, today, I would like to address the issue of school board independence. Some have argued that this resolution would allow rural school boards to make their own decisions in regard to arming school staff, and that the IASB has a deep-seated belief in local control. I share this belief on many issues, such as how to teach various topics, but there are other issues that should not be left to local control, and this is one of them. We do not allow individual districts to weaken learning standards or to discriminate. Guns in schools is one of these issues that should not be at the local level. Also, the resolution specifically states that the IASB would lobby for legislation in favor of arming school staff. If members of rural districts would like to lobby their legislators, that is their right, but the IASB should not be lobbying for those laws. The decisions in other districts also affect the safety of the children in our schools. Students from District 205 visit schools in other districts. Do we want to send our children to a school that allows staff to carry guns? There's no good research on the effect of arming teachers. Instead of advocating for local guns in schools, we should be advocating for safety solutions that are proven to work. State policy should be research-based. There are other avenues that rural schools could pursue other than weakening our gun laws. Weakening these laws is a slippery slope. Any resolution taken by this board to say that our district will not allow guns could easily be undone by a future board. A much stronger protection is to not change the current laws in this regard. I urge you to vote no on the resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We will move on now to reports and presentations. Mentoring, oh, sorry. Oh, yes.
Sorry, I wasn't here early enough to get my name on the list. I had a whole thing prepared and the same two comments as before, but I believe the two ladies spoke more eloquently than I can tonight. Mine is more emotional, I believe, and I am strongly suggesting that the board vote against this proposal. My name's Phil Fernandez, sorry. You know, Illinois districts certainly aren't allowed to let anyone knowingly possess a firearm within 1,000 feet of the school districts under the Federal Gun-Free School Zones Act of 1990. I like that act. It's pretty good. So as a parent of this school district, I strongly encourage you to vote against this proposal. So I'll leave it at that. What I'd like to say in addition is that I'd like to thank the board for all their hard work in getting the referendum passed on November 6th. So I know it was many years and a huge undertaking to get all the data present, presented into our, into our community, and then to get consensus from our community. So well done, everybody. Thank you to all the people on the committees for the efforts to make sure that our schools are a priority today and for our future. Thank you, Dr. Moyer, for your vision, for your tireless effort, for your responding to all the questions, and mostly for staying the course. Your dedication to our community is inspiring. And I stand ready to help for the next phase of the commitment to our community, for our schools, and especially our kiddos. So thank you.
All right. Reports and presentations. Mentoring and induction.
So since I got here, I've had some conversations with Deb Lee about taking a look at how we can create coherence between our learning and teaching priorities and the way we induct our new teachers so that we can integrate the things that we're looking for in the classroom into their early experiences when they come into the district. And so she's been gradually working on refinements in conjunction with Linda Farinbacher, who did a lot of work on this as part of her internship for superintendent's endorsement. I think that they have done some very interesting things this year with some new approaches to our program, and we really haven't talked much about this at a board meeting in the past, at any board meetings in the past. And so I thought it would be an appropriate time to share with you what we're doing in this regard. So go for it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you and good evening. Both Linda Farinbacher and I will provide just a brief overview of the mentoring program, which is part of the new teacher induction program. Let's see. So you may have seen this slide before, this graphic. The district goal is to have all students be college career and life-ready, and that means that they can demonstrate growth and proficiency in the sixthes. How do we accomplish that? Through a rigorous and relevant curriculum, instructional practices, and so on. The learning and teaching team sees our priorities as threefold. There are certainly other elements involved, but creating a shared understanding of the district's vision, providing curricular resources and materials that support a rigorous and relevant experience, and also to support instructional practices. And that's, this is where we see the mentor program and new teacher induction pieces supporting those efforts. So Dr. Henderson spoke with you or provided an update about the New Educator Academy earlier this year, so I won't emphasize that. But the mentor program is a two-year commitment on the part of mentors and also proteges. We'll spend a little bit of time providing you with an update on the mentor program. And both the mentor program and the New Educator Academy are grounded in the Illinois New Teacher Induction Standards. Specifically tonight, I'll share a brief update on the mentor program itself, which are standards five through seven. So this is perhaps a sobering statistic, but this is based on some research provided by the Illinois New Teacher Collaborative. But 40% of new teachers leave the profession within the first five years of their career. So over the past five years, we have seen, this is our new educator retention rate, but what we also don't see in this data are part-time positions, releases, or one-year contracts. So this is something, an area that we do need to look into a little bit more closely. As far as our mentor program, what does research say? Like any other industry, any new employee, new teachers need support to become effective. Intensive new teacher mentoring helps teachers to become more effective faster. And the last two bullet points do dovetail in that we retain new teachers, which then also saves money in that new monies aren't put forward in recruiting, hiring, and onboarding new staff members each year. That's why we see an importance in the new teacher induction programs. So as far as the mentor program goes, the first year is the most intensive year. Most of our mentors and proteges spend up to or beyond the equivalent of one week beyond their contractual time working together on a number of different topics. The mentors participate in orientation before the start of the school year, and then throughout the school year, there are meetings that both mentors and proteges may attend. As part of the mentor program as well, there are reflections that are required on the part of proteges and mentors, nonevalutive observations, so it's an opportunity for folks to visit each other in the classroom and to discuss instructional practices. A summary of the kind of activities and the time that the mentors and proteges have spent together, as well as an evaluation of the mentor programs, that there's ongoing improvements to the program. Year two mentoring is as necessary. It's less active, but certainly I think there are many informal opportunities for mentors and proteges to collaborate, be it PLCs or professional learning communities. They may teach the same course or co-teach, so it is a little bit more informal in nature, but we also do ask that teachers provide reflections in their second year of teaching as well. What do we look for in a mentor? We're looking for outstanding veteran teachers that are able to provide a positive introduction to the culture and to the district, and that can promote, and who can promote great instructional So high-quality mentoring. I won't read you the slides here, but we look for, again, teachers who are effective in the classroom, who are positive in their approach to the classroom and to their teaching, and continuing professional development opportunities for both mentors and proteges, and to continue improving our programs.
Well, it is very important, well, actually, one of my most important jobs is to hire the best person in a teaching role. My second most important, I think, is getting the right mentor, because it does make a difference. It sets a course for a teacher, their professional career. And I think it's very important. I love, I love working with new teachers and mentors. It is something I am passionate about, so I'm thankful I'm able to do this with Deb. So as part of our program for this year, we've offered opportunities for proteges and mentors to attend monthly sessions on professional learning. This is something new that is, that we've started this year. I started out in September. I led the Learning Targets presentation for mentors and their proteges, and it went very well, I thought. Not just me, but anyway, I could have, I could have brought my rocks tonight. If you, I, one night I did do a presentation here. I had my boulder, my pebble, and a little bitty flip of a rock of some kind. And so I did do that. And then in October, we had, let's see, PLC, Jen Barnaby, PLCs, and then just last week, week or so, it was Tim Riordan and Christina, and they did feedback. And it gives us an opportunity, we spend most of our time during our meeting actually in-depth learning and discussing and conversations, and it's really very refreshing. And I think it's a very good opportunity for, not only for new teachers, but for mentors who come, to really participate. I love, I love working with new teachers and mentors. It is something I am passionate about, so I'm thankful I'm able to do this with Deb. So as part of our program for this year, we've offered opportunities for proteges and mentors to attend monthly sessions on professional learning. This is something new that is, that we've started this year. I started out in September. I led the Learning Targets presentation for mentors and their proteges. And it went very well, I thought. Not just me, but anyway, I could have, I could have brought my rocks tonight if you, I, one night I did do a presentation here. I had my boulder, my pebble, and a little bitty flip of a rock of some kind. And so I did do that. And then in October, we had, let's see, PLC, Jen Barnaby, PLCs. And then just last week, a week or so, it was Tim Riordan and Christina, and they did feedback. And it gives us an opportunity, we spend most of our time during our meeting, actually in-depth learning and discussing and conversations. And it's really very refreshing. And I think it's a very good opportunity for, not only for new teachers, but for mentors who come, to really participate and interact with others in the district as well as their proteges. So you can see, we have a full year planned of different activities and learning each month. And, let's see, I think that's all I need to say about that one. Okay. So here is from our last mentoring, this was feedback with Christina and Tim. And they, we went through various questions. They had a conversation pieces. They got up and moved around and interacted with others. So that was where that took us. And our continuous improvement is going to be this. We're going to be looking at data from teacher evaluation, as well as we do a feedback each time from our presentations to get information about how we can improve and what needs are still out there. So that's kind of where we're headed with that.
Well, thank you for that. I know as, when I was a first-year teacher, you just, it can be overwhelming. So this is an excellent program that you're building, and thank you for all that work. Any questions? Margaret?
Wanted to say thank you again. And a quick question. You mentioned the mentors and being very important, selecting the mentors. That's additional work that you're asking them to do. How do you incent good mentors to, good people to become mentors, good teachers?
If somebody who is passionate about the, about their profession, you, there doesn't have to be too much of an incentive. They know the importance of, of what they're doing and, and the role they can play. And I think it's pretty, it's pretty natural. Most of the time, it comes e, very easily. You can just ask, and sometimes people volunteer. They'll say, "I'd like to be the mentor if, if you feel like I'm the best fit for that." So it, it's not too hard to get anybody. I think it's actually very easy.
Margaret, we do also offer a stipend to our mentors. But as Linda said, it really is about those excellent teachers in your building who want to share that practice and who believe in supporting new people coming up through the organization. Jim?
The statistic you cited is that 40% of teachers leave within their first five years. Do we know why? And do we survey that our teachers within their first five years that, that tell us they're not coming back? And, and ask?
I'll let, I'm gonna let Jim speak. He may, Jim, do you have any numbers? Ours, ours is not 40% locally, but do we do exit surveys and can you help, help with some of that part of it?
We do. We started exit surveys last year. Actually, the hard part is actually getting them to complete them and fill them out. But they are sent to any teacher who determines that they are not coming back. So I don't have statistical numbers in terms of the reasons why people leave, but they do get an exit survey. And I would be happy to compile what I do have, although it won't be 100% accurate based on the number of surveys sent out.
But it sounds like it's something we've started to do and...
Yes. Last year was the first year that we did that, and we'll continue that this year.
That's great news. So, and we'll eventually have enough data to garner some wisdom from that. Thank you.
Do you have, Deb, do you have some of the, I, I could maybe make a couple comments, but do you have some of the reasons that those people list that you could share with Jim?
I could share some of the research, but in terms of folks in the district, I don't think that we've done specific work yet.
No, right, right.
Yeah. Yeah. Whether it's difficulty of the position, not liking the culture, feeling overwhelmed, or not feeling prepared.
Demand, the demands that come with it that they're not expecting. Sometimes the training hasn't, their preparation hasn't prepared them for what they're facing, and they just give up. And it's, it's a lot more difficult than they envisioned.
And that statistic, they, they leave their profession altogether. They, they, it's not like they just move schools.
In that, in that particular, there are a couple of studies that were cited, but in, in those particular cases, they were folks who left the profession altogether.
All right. Thanks.
So Jim, there's been, there's been a national teacher shortage, and it's, and it's hitting Illinois and in some parts of the state more extreme than others. But they, they focused on this a little bit at the last Luda Conference. And the average starting pay for teachers now is, in relative terms, I think less than what it was in 2006. And they're, they're falling behind a lot of other professions. And they feel a lot of times like they go into the profession and it's not, all the testing and all the various different things, just the, the pressure and the stress and the, the expectations for what they're making, they just decide that it's not worth it. In fact, what they said, it's becoming a new phenomenon, that they don't just like quit at the end of the year. They just like walk out and don't come back. Sometimes in the middle of the year, on a Friday, you don't see them again, and they're gone. So, so there, there's been a lot of increasing pressures on teachers. And it's just a lot of factors, I think, combined that we have less people going in and, and very difficult, even in our district, to find special ed teachers. You know, we, we pay competitively and have decent working conditions as compared to a lot of the schools you think of when you think of inner-city schools or other situations like that. But we, we have certain subject areas where we have, are starting to have difficulty filling positions.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you so much. Next is business incubator plans. Dr. Cohen?
So just by way of introduction, Mark, I know, I'm assuming you're gonna talk about the event a week or two ago and some things that, that we can expect with the manufacturing lab. But this is kind of an intent to be, intended to be an update on, on these two first steps towards career pathways and some innovative programming at the high school. And the reason we put it on the agenda here this month is because next month, Todd Schmidt is gonna talk about some of the facility plans for summer maintenance, and that's gonna include information about the business incubator at York. So we wanted to kind of hit the instructional piece this month. You'll get the facilities piece next month, and I'll just turn it over at that.
Sure. So we're gonna talk about the manufacturing lab as well as the business incubator. You've seen this graphic at least once tonight. We use this in all of our learning, teaching presentations. But every time we come in front of you to, to give you an update in a program, we're, each thing we do represents a different entry point on this triangle. And this really is a classroom and student's priority and goes right to, our students being college career and life-ready. This is a, both of these programs, the manufacturing lab and the business incubator, are programs that are geared towards giving students real-world skills that they can use immediately upon leaving York, whether that is in the business world, going directly to work, whether that's creating their own startup, or whether, or going to a manufacturing field right away, or that, whether or not they take that to a collegiate level, whether they decide to get a degree in engineering or manufacturing, or to go into business or finance. Our learning and teaching priorities, again, you've seen these also before. When we talk about rigorous and relevant instruction, these, these again are real-world skills. This is not, I mean, they are academic, but they are also very practical. Our manufacturing lab is getting up and running and with, and we're starting to outfit the lab with equipment. I apologize for the layout of the slides. I, I'm still a Google Slides guy, and everything goes into, I believe into PowerPoint before it gets put up. One of the biggest restrictions so far in the manufacturing lab is by actually getting equipment in the door. And so that was actually a big part of the project this summer, was putting in doors that were appropriately sized to get equipment into the space. Some of you have been in that space recently. Currently, we have principles of physics being taught in that room with Ken Ross. Now, Ken is retiring at the end of this year. And so that space is gonna be repurposed once the desks are out of the way and we can start putting in equipment. We were able to purchase one lathe last year and horizontal bandsaw that came through our Perkins grant. That equipment has been installed. The room, again, had to be refitted to get the equipment down the hallway and in the door. And then we also had to provide the electrical service for all of these machines. This year, in fact, Todd and I were just talking about this today, an RFP is gonna go out very shortly to purchase three lathes and three mills with various tooling packages. And all that is being provided by outside, by either the Perkins grant or C-TIG grant, and then a very generous donation from our District 205 Foundation in the amount of $80,000 to, to purchase this equipment. We have also applied for a TMA grant that's the Technology and Manufacturing Association. They're a local group out of Schaumburg for additional revenue for some of this equipment. They've provided 73 grants over the last 20 or so years. I did a clip at about three per year to get manufacturing labs back into high schools and even some, even some of our community colleges. So we are optimistic that we will have some support from TMA. Our timeline in terms of implementing the manufacturing courses, we actually take, doing, kind of doing double work this year with, between manufacturing and Project Lead the Way. Dr. Moyer mentioned our open house. We did have 20 or, 20 people, or 20 different organizations, RSVP. Some had to back out that night. But we had six companies that were willing to volunteer to be part of our Manufacturing Council. So these would be individuals that we would work with on a regular basis to bounce ideas off of, to give us input on our curriculum, to partner with, to find jobs for our graduates, whether those are, you know, after the grad, I'm sorry, with, for our graduates, but even perhaps, we talked a lot about summer work between junior and senior year and getting them involved in manufacturing sooner rather than later, and trying to find workarounds for our, for what generally is considered their, their insurance regulations about having students younger than 18 in those work environments. But there are ways to do that, and so we're working on that. We are applying for dual credit with College DU Page for our manufacturing courses. And then if students sign up for classes, we'll be able to start working on staffing and sectioning. Now, our manufacturing lab is also, the reason why it's pairing up with Project Lead the Way is, is students who advance the Project Lead the Way engineering curriculum, they will also have the opportunity to work with the manufacturing equipment in that lab as they get to be, in their second and third year of the Project Lead the Way curriculum. So you have the manufacturing side, but then you also have the design and engineering side. The second class in Project, in the Project Lead the Way curriculum, which would be approved next year for implementation in 1920, involves materials and structures, statics and dynamics. So it really gets into, you know, you have the opportunity to use that equipment to its fullest potential. And so what you're gonna see eventually in the coursebook for York is, would be courses, the ones in yellow are gonna be brought to the board in the future for implementation in the year after. But it would be that second-year Principles of Engineering class and also our Advanced Manufacturing Technology, where students would be able to, you know, on top of just milling, they would start learning how to thread, tap, bore, and then also our C, use our CNC machines. The computer, computer numeric control sort of manufacturing, which really, when we're, we're working with metals, but it could be applied equal to a lot of different materials, and also can involve every, you know, we're, while we will be using actual drill, drill heads, mill heads for that, it could be applied to plasma cutting, could be applied to waterjet types of manufacturing. So there, there are lots of applications off of what it is that we're doing in the high school. Specifically, the manufacturing pathway is gonna involve two more courses. And again, these courses are gonna be dual-credit, give, really give students opportunities to earn what's called NIMs certifications. I, so I can read my own chicken scratch. National Institute for Metalworking Skills. If I, if I try to guess on that, I would've been wrong. So as they earn these NIMs certifications along the way, it gives them actionable, tangible skills that they have once they graduate from York. And if you were, those of you that were not able to attend the manufacturing open house, this space right now, this space right here is currently being used for instruction by Ken Ross. And right now, we have counters along the back that house a lot of his equipment. We do have one mill, and then we have a, I'm sorry, one lathe here, and we have a horizontal bandsaw over here in that space. The rest of those spots have yet to be populated, but that's gonna happen as equipment rolls in this summer. What we did do was install a door here that connects to our computer-aided drafting lab so those students can work in the lab, go out and machine their part, and they can go back and forth in between that space. The same would be true when we have our Project Lead the Way engineering courses in there, that they can go ahead and go in and out of that lab. Any questions about the manufacturing lab and where we're at with that program? Go ahead.
I was gonna ask about certifications, and you mentioned NIMs. Are there multiple certifications within that?
Yes. Yes. So you can, you get certified in a variety of different machines. You get certified on the machine. You get certified in the type of machine, machine that you're working with. And there are ways of us becoming certified to administer those certification tests. So Dan Kalenberg, Joe Stoltz would have to go through those programs and get their certification to be instructors. And they're, they're in the process of doing that right now through College DU Page. Yes, Jim?
First of all, I think this is great on multiple levels. That engineering schools, good engineering schools are hard to get into. And I hear a lot of honors-level kids saying, "Oh, I'd love to take this class or that class, but even if I got an A, it would lower my grade point average because it's not honors-weighted." What are we doing to help those kids take these courses? Because this is invaluable to somebody that's gonna be an engineer, to, to actually work with their hands and manufacture the product that appears on their computer screen.
The manufacturing class, because it's dual-credit, is weighted. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on and talk a little bit about the business incubator. The incubator EDU program, you know, I can describe it best as a shark tank on a little bit of steroids, because it really takes, it takes, it ends up culminating in a very shark-tank-like experience for our students, a very practical experience in front of, in front of a panel, a committee of people that are not D205 employees, where they have to pitch their product, and they get asked some very hard questions, and have the opportunity to receive some support. It really involves getting a program, getting either a product or service off the ground and make, and creating a viable business plan. It involves working with mentors, involves working with a mentor from the community, and then again, having a panel of, that would come in when they go ahead and pitch their product. But it revolves around the lean startup process. The idea that, you know, instead of traditional, you know, economics, you have to have a, you know, a capital plan, and then you have to, you know, you have to have, have employees, et cetera, really involves more entrepreneurship, like starting from the, starting from the ground floor. And you hear about, you know, folks that develop a product with, with very little in terms of resources. Because, you know, even things like manufacturing is becoming cheaper and cheaper to manufacture. It's becoming easier and easier to get services up and running off the ground. Having the opportunity to visit a couple of schools had this. Some were very service-oriented, so some, you know, some folks were trying to come up with a business model that involved, you know, an app for dog walking or things of that nature. Others were very product-oriented. When we visited Glenbarre, actually, Chris and I went not that long ago to visit Glenbarre, and there was one group that was working on a universal mount for your tablet so that when you're traveling on an airplane, you could hang your tablet in front of you, having, instead of having to look down like this and, and, you know, getting that crick in your neck from always looking down at your device. And so they were, had the, you know, they had a prototype that they had printed on a 3D printer, and that they were able to, so be able to manufacture it relatively inexpensively, and then they were starting to tweak it. The different units that go through the year involve a lot of planning, involve focusing on marketing, so there's, even though it's a, you know, the, the course doesn't say marketing, it's a business incubator program, involves discovery and ideation. What is, what does a valuable product look like? How do I make connections to customers? You know, so tell me about your problem, and then after coming up with a solution, does this solve your problem? You know, how do I finance my product? How do I, you know, develop what, what they call, the MVP is their Minimum Viable Product? Validate it, that once they produce it and show it to folks like, yes, I would purchase this, then they have to promote it and ultimately pitch it. It involves what they call a business model canvas. So here are problems. These are, this is a problem that we need to solve. And before this process even happens, they, they talk about, and they get in groups around their passions, around what their skills are, around what their, their areas of interest are, and what type of people they like to be around. So they form their tribe, and then they, they get together in their groups. But then they look for problems to solve. They come up with ideas for solutions, metrics to see whether or not they've met that solution. And so all this, this actually covers the entire first semester of the course. So far, this So far, this summer, Erin DeLuga, myself, and a new business teacher, Steve Hatterline, had the opportunity to attend the Incubator Summit downtown. Actually, coming up Monday, there's going to be a meeting with John Quigley and John Kelly from the Elmhurst Chamber of Commerce. Steve, myself, Erin, and Wendy Albert, the department chair, to start talking about setting up partnerships for our business mentors for these students. In the spring of '19, we'll continue to do some site visits. Steve needs to get out and see a couple of these business incubator programs up and running and build some relationships. The very first incubator program launched in Barrington, and the fellow that does that work does a great job, and they have open houses once a year. And then we'll attend the Incubator Summit again and continue to work on curriculum development. We do have access to that curriculum this year, and he is working on that. Dr. Moore mentioned the, what a business incubator space looks like. Essentially, we want to set up areas where students have the, have access to, let's say, multimedia presentation where they have a, you know, big LCD screen where they can work on their ideas. We want to have an area that has some whiteboards. The picture on the left is taken at Glenbarre. They actually have a film surface on their desktop where they can use that as one giant whiteboard. On the right is Leyden East, I believe, similar concept. This is Mundeline's space. What Mundeline has there is, again, they have the ability to, they have the flexible seating so when their mentors come in once a week or every other week or so, they have different spaces they can go. You can see a conference room in the back. So when their mentors come in, they have the ability to kind of go in a more quiet environment and work and get feedback from the business partners that are working with them. You know, ceilings look a little different, you know, cloud spaces. It's designed to look like a business, like a classroom, because that's really what the students are doing while they're in there, is they're creating a business. I will tell you that Erin has experience in her previous district where a student actually from the incubator program made it to Shark Tank and was sponsored. We had, I had the opportunity when I visited Buffalo Grove last year to talk with two young ladies who had their product picked up by Ace Hardware. It was a, it was basically a de-skunking kit for your pet, because what ends up happening is you let your dog out about 8:30 at night, and the dog gets skunked, and then now you got to run to the store. And the idea was they had, they researched the best products and tested products. They bought like skunk oil and then tested products to see what actually would work in de-skunking a material, or de-skunking the fur material that they purchased, figured out the ratio, put it together in kits, and they marketed it to Ace Hardware. And actually, now they have a viable business. And they handed it off, and when they, they started that their junior year, senior, they continued to grow it, and then they handed that business off to franchisees who are also in the business incubator program now that they are freshmen in college. So you can't underestimate the ideas that the 17 and 18-year-olds have when they jump into this program. So.
Karen?
Thanks, Mark, for giving us an update. So you've got the manufacturing lab, you've got the business incubator, those are both under Wendy at the high school level. And then we have Project Lead the Way, that is middle school and high school. So how are we looking at it? Like, is that under Wendy as well, or how are we?
Well, Wendy is the department chair for these programs at the high school. At the middle school, the department chair for Project Lead the Way is Deb Seagut, who's out of Churchville. And Deb's expertise, her background is actually in technology, so she's perfect because those programs have technology woven throughout.
So they're meeting and sharing things so that we've got the common thread?
Yeah, we just had our, actually, all of our UAs had their department meeting today with Dave Beatty. So they get together once a month.
Great, so I like the seamless approach.
So Karen, I would add to that, too, that the incubator has middle school, the incubator EDU has middle school strands and actually fifth-grade strands. And as we, as we continue to move through this, we've had some preliminary discussions. I was at a presentation where they talked about how they do this in middle school and elementary, and I see this as, when you talked about like seamless or whatever, I see this as really supporting some of these six Cs and other ideas that we've been talking about. And in fact, Mark has said, you know, when you think about the middle school experience, business is really the one area that's not currently represented. So I see it potentially fitting as we move along this path in a lot of different ways at other grade levels, too, besides just high school.
Yeah, all of our elective areas have a presence in the middle school except for business. And so I think that would be a natural fit.
Okay, so my question is, I think I'm going to, I'm going to state it and then alter a little bit based on this last piece of information, which is good. My question was just, I'm going to start at the high school, and what's our approach to educating, arming, I guess is the point, you know, our counselors with the information to help the students primarily, right? But, and parents, understand what we're doing, what the options are, what, you know, to pair with the students' interests, what classes to explore, and, you know, interests, if they're interested in it, whether the pathways and what are the various, I'm going to call it prongs, depending on what particular area they're interested in. Because it could get a little overwhelming.
Oh, absolutely.
For, for, you know, when you're first new to it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, how are we planning to provide the information to our employees, to provide to, you know, the students and parents to help with that process?
Sure. Well, our high school administration does work to communicate that with our counseling department. And really, the establishment of those pathways was a big push for them to generate that online coursebook, where you can see those pathways coming into focus, just like the one I showed earlier with the manufacturing courses, where you can see year one, year two, year three. Are you interested in manufacturing? Are you interested in automotive? Are you interested in career in engineering? Those things right there, if this is something of interest to you, here are the sequences that would get you, get you there, so you could explore that while you're still in high school. I will say this, I would say that one of our greatest barriers right now, and you may, you may agree, I'd love to know your feedback, one of our biggest barriers right now is that sometimes we have, you know, folks that are very interested in their children getting into such a great college for a program, that they don't take advantage of the classes we have to explore those programs while they're still in high school, because of the pursuit of AP and the pursuit of dual credit. And that is something that we continue to work on. York has, we have excellent students. It is a very competitive environment in some, in many cases. And so I would say our greatest piece of education is to get students to, you know, to try and, you know, take advantage of the opportunities they have while they're at York to explore careers, to really truly figure out whether or not it's for them. If they're in their second engineering course and they discover this is not for me, they get to start studying statics and kinematics, and they're like, this is not my bag, I'd much rather figure that out while they're in high school that they don't want to be an engineer, before I start spending, you know, U of I engineering tuition, you know, until them to get to their junior year and figure that out. So that, I think, is a big education piece that we need to make, but that's, you know, it's not a traditional, I guess, a traditional high school experience in the minds of many of our parents.
Right, and I, and I think it's, you know, once again, I'll go to the counseling expertise that have the students for four years, right? And maybe there's a handoff from eighth grade to freshman year about, you know, just, you know, the teachers get to know what the kids' interests are and to then help, maybe, you know, help them understand what options are out there and what it really means versus just words on paper. So the second piece that I was thinking of is, I know that we have the eighth grade night when eighth graders are going, you know, to York, right? To see what's there. I don't know what it looks like now. I mean, I remember when I was a parent, you know, involved at York, we created that program, so I know what it was then, but we've changed so much now, or added so much now. You know, maybe if it's not being updated, that's an avenue, so that they can actually tour some of those places and see what it really means, both the students and the parents. That might help.
Yeah, they, for their upcoming night, which is actually going to be in a week or two, they have, they do have the spaces open, and then parents have the ability to choose sessions. So it is an activity and academic night, and they have the ability to go, if I'm interested in hearing more about English offerings, because I'm not sure what level of English would be best for my child, they can go to some presentation by the English department. If they're interested in exploring, you know, electives, they can hear presentations from that area. So there is, there's quite a degree of parent choice, because what is appropriate information for maybe somebody whose oldest child, their firstborn is going through York, is going to be different than somebody who may have, you know, this is their fourth one, their, you know, their last, their last hurrah, and then they're all pros. So, so every, I guess every family comes out with a different lens.
Jim?
Mark, to the point you were, you were making just a minute ago, that, and that Karen was making, that kids need counseling advice. I mean, we're coming up with a lot of great electives, but there's a lot of kids that just, by the time they take four years of math, four years of science, four years of social studies, four years of English, and they're in band, orchestra, or choir, there's no room left for any of this. So sophomore year, you've got to, you've got to say, all right, what is my list of colleges that I think I'm going to apply to? And what are their requirements for high school diploma? I mean, that takes an intensive amount of parent and student education to be looking that far in advance, or we need to free up some time in the students' schedules to take some of these great new electives. What are we doing about that?
Well, we've talked a lot about the fact that there's a perception out there that four years of a language are a requirement to get into a highly selective institution. That is starting to change more and more, even the University of Illinois, two years of a language is, will get you into just about everything. We're fortunate, believe it or not, we are fortunate that York has an eight-period day and students can take seven classes. Many other high schools have a seven-period day, the students take six. So if you have seven classes and you're available academically, you take your four-core. If you take BOC, that's five. If you take language, that's six. You still have an elective in there. What we find, though, and you may know this to be the case from families, is that we have students that take such a rigorous academic curriculum that sometimes they want, just want a study hall, so they can catch up. And so they're, because they fill those other six slots with courses that are so rigorous, they feel like they need a break in their day, and so they don't take that elective. Instead, they choose, they elect for a study hall. So those are all things we've talked about, those are, and those are, you know, things we need to continue to work through.
Right.
I hope that answers your question.
I'm wondering, and I know this, bear with me for a moment on how, do we know the percent of students from York who go on to a four-year traditional school?
A four-year school, I don't have the number off the top of my head. I know that we're in the high 80s or post-secondary, but that also includes, you know, two-year College U of Page, that, you know, so I do not have that four-year number readily available.
And the reason I asked that question, and Jim referenced that he thought the number was approximately 75%. I recall at the state of the schools last year, the gentleman that was here, he talked about, what was his name?
Steve Corrigan?
Steve Corrigan. He talked about careers that we hadn't even imagined yet that would be, our students would be taking. He also talked about how, you know, he just talked about in dollars and cents, the living that different people made. So I say all of that because while we do have a very, very strong educational, college-bent community, there is a significant percent of people who choose maybe not to go to a four-year college, and perhaps not to go immediately. So I say that because one of the, one of the, the mantra is college and career ready. And I think it's important that we always look at how are we managing all of our students? You know, let's make sure we have a very strong academic process for those who are interested in pursuing a highly academic process. And let's make sure we also have those, for those students who may be interested in more practical or trade-based skills initially, that we have something for them. So I think this is important, that we balance, we continue to balance our curriculum process.
Well, and that's the reason why these programs, that's the reason why we're updating on these programs today. That's the reason why, you know, we've talked a little bit about the, you know, future addition potentially of a medical lab for students to pursue CNA certification while they're still at York, whether they're going to be going into medicine to become a doctor, or a physical therapist, or going into nursing, or just, or going for a two-year degree, having those experience with patients, that bedside manner, that, you know, how do you approach treating a patient? Those are valuable skills that can be learned while still in high school. So we, you know, these two programs address that concern directly, and we're going to continue to find ways to incorporate more academically rigorous, but also job-skill-based programming at York.
So Margaret, I think you were referring to Bill Daggett when we had Daggett in. But I saw from our KPI presentation that 2017, we had 83.4% of our students enrolling in college the first year after high school, but Mary Ann, that's, that's including, so that's including for two and four-year.
I just wanted to know how much, you know, as you talk about all these things, how much do you work with colleges to just find out what they're really looking for in the admission process? So we're, you know, it's one thing for us to connect from the bottom up, but I also feel like, are we connecting with what the colleges are actually looking for? And are we adjusting as that potentially changes?
I would say our college and career counseling department at York does a great job of that. When I started to ask them about, for example, the, they're still working on getting some information to me, but we talked about, for example, the addition of Calculus III and the impact that would have, and, you know, instantly, our guidance directors knew exactly what it was, you know, exactly what the question was, and they said, well, it depends. You know, here are schools where that might be important, and here are schools where as long as you're taking a rigorous curriculum, it's not as big of an issue. So they do stay on top of it. It's difficult to say, because, you know, you have some schools now that are just dropping the SAT altogether. And so really, you have to stay current on those things, school by school, program by I know that's not, that's not a great answer, but yes, and we do try and, we do try and stay on top of it and look at general trends overall in terms of what schools are looking for. The bottom line is they want to see you taking a rigorous curriculum and doing well. And so, and more and more, too, the unweighted GPA is starting to factor in. It used to be, you know, take all the weighted classes you can, but you'll see, we're starting to see a few schools, like Illinois State, for example, that are beginning to look at unweighted GPA, only because you have so many different schools and different ways of weighting, that it's difficult to compare apples to apples.
And then have you considered, or have we considered opening up some of these for like mini classes in the summer, even if it's not necessarily to get a full credit of some sort, but just, you know, for creating all these great spaces and opportunities, and the idea is to expose kids to different opportunities? Is there a way to open up the summer as an avenue for, you know, giving kids that opportunity?
Bill Riddle and I actually had a conversation about summer school about a week and a half ago, because with the transition from World Studies to, to human geography at the freshman level, and the addition of an AP option at the freshman level, we're, and the World Studies curriculum is going to be rewritten, but it's going to be rewritten as a sophomore, one semester elective to extend world geography and do a little bit more of a world history perspective. We have to take a look at our summer options, because World Studies was one of our big draws to summer school. And with that option being kind of taken out of the mix for the time being, what is going to take its place? So that is, that is a conversation we're having. I know Jim has expressed also Project Lead the Way during the summer. That is another conversation that we're going to be having, because now that we have Project Lead the Way trained teachers, we can offer that curriculum in the summer. The trick is going to be, and this is going to, we're going to have to see how we go with sectioning in the next couple of months, the trick is going to be, as we start to project for next year, all of the training and the new courses takes place in the summer. And we won't know that summer training schedule until April, but people are going to make their summer plans well in advance of April. So, but if we know, for example, that somebody might be teaching Project Lead the Way at sixth grade, where we already have design and modeling, and they're not going to be learning a new curriculum, then I can pencil them in to teach. We can offer a Project Lead the Way course for three weeks at the middle school. We can offer a Project Lead the Way course for three weeks at the middle school. So the summer options, one of the, we do need to expect, look at our summer options at the high school, and then also look at what, what sort of enrichment summer options we can offer at middle school and elementary. So that is actually one of my professional goals for this year.
Chris, you had some. Thank you, by the way.
Yeah, and I think, given the acceptance rate at these elite schools like U of I Engineering, that I would argue there's probably a very significant, if not a majority of our kids are, are, or maybe not in those programs, but are going to great schools and are trying to figure out what they want to do. And I'm going through this right now with my senior. It's, it's what do you want to study? And, and York has provided a great opportunity to sample a lot of different things for less than $50,000 a year. So I, I would fully support this. One question, I'm involved with a couple of business incubators, and then the accelerator at my alma mater, which I won't mention so I don't get sneers from Jim. But, and watched this thing develop over the last 12 or 13 years. And it started out as a business school program. And it really started to take off when it got integrated with the engineering and the sciences, where a lot of the ideas and a lot of intellectual property came out and married with the business side to commercialize. And I'm not saying we have that set up, but I think that what you're building here from an incubator's standpoint and an entrepreneurship standpoint, the cross-pollinization with even the manufacturing lab, but getting into some of the sciences and some of the other areas as you get to, you're kind of bringing it to life and thinking of new things or inventing new things, isn't just germane to a class in a, in a department, but it's something that can be woven into the fabric. And that's how you get, I think, a lot more kids involved. And it could even become something that's, you know, club-based, where you, you, we have this competition at the end, and it's maybe kids in the class, but it also may be open to ki-, I'm just throwing out ideas, but I just think the more you can weave this into the fabric of the other parts of the school, the better, better off it is.
The potential for that interdisciplinary piece between the business department and the career and tech department, where we come up with a, with an idea, and then they go down into the hall and then they manufacture a prototype, that's been something that has been tossed about. So the idea of getting those groups to work together.
Anybody else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You staying up there for middle, middle school course recommendation?
I was out of notes. So the middle school curriculum, there, there was, in your backend material, there was a memo regarding two new courses, the middle school. It's the natural progression of Project Lead the Way. Project Lead the Way, the gateway curriculum, which is the middle school curriculum, has 10 different courses. Three are in the computer science realm, one is in the medical careers realm, and the other six are engineering. Last year made the decision, design modeling is the basic introductory engineering course. And we also went with computer science for innovators and makers. Those courses are up and running currently. If you have not had the chance to, I'm not sure how many of you swung by and seen more of those at the middle schools, for those of you that are middle school liaisons. Those kids are very excited. I can't wait to go see them next week. In fact, they're right now working on the, in the computer science class, working on a safe, designing a circuit to, to basically protect in something inside of a cabinet. I believe there is going to be some invitations coming your way from Deb Seegat. We just talked about that this, this afternoon. She's actually going to be doing something where kids are presenting on their final projects the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. But the next step in those, for those curriculum is going to be moving on, you know, the next step in engineering course, and then the next step in the computer science course. The computer science course was an easy one, and the next step in their progression is app creators. And I think it's very relevant, you talk about jobs that haven't, jobs that exist or that exist now that didn't exist 10 years ago. There's one. The idea that, you know, students can be creators of, of code and then use that on a tablet to be, to be, accomplish a practical task. So that app creators course is being proposed for next year, as well as a flight and space class. With the remaining classes, the six ones that were, that were out there, we did survey students. The most popular one was flight and space, so we did choose to go that route. The curriculum is up for a rewrite, but from what I understand, that's, that's a good thing. So our teachers be getting trained directly in the, in the new curriculum. Some other ones just didn't pull as high. Was interesting was the medical detectives course. You either loved it or you hated it. It was the most, it was one of the more requested classes, but it was also the least requested class. You know, you're used to seeing a bell curve, and you're not used to seeing a curve that looks like this. And it was the first time in a long time in education I've seen a curve that was inverted, an inverted bell. We did, we have noticed that the enrollment in our Project Lead the Way classes does skew more towards the male, by an average of about two and a half to one. So the, you know, different genders and their, their choices were looked at in terms of selecting the flight and space course.
Shannon?
Yeah, there's a lot of demand to take the, the Project Lead the Way at the middle schools. And we can't offer enough sections of, of the classes that are in demand. So a lot of kids are not getting their choices. They, they want to take these classes and they can't. They have to take, you know, you have to list like, what are your top seven choices? And, you know, you might not get your first or second, you're getting your fifth or sixth, which are still valuable courses. But that, that was a, that was a problem, an issue with this, with the launch of the Project Lead the Way. Like, there weren't enough sections for kids to get their top choices. So I just wonder if you've heard that or-
I have not heard that. If a student was elected to take Project Lead the Way, we fit them in?
No, it didn't. They were, they had to rank, you know, like one through seven, whatever the, how many electives there are, seven or eight. You ranked them, and then you didn't always get your top choices.
Is that maybe true for acceleration? I'm not sure.
What she's saying is for acceleration, that might be the case, but for-
We can talk offline, but why don't we follow up?
Yeah, that's, I have not heard that.
Okay, yeah.
I have not heard that. No, in terms of choosing, in terms of choosing these electives, we can't, I don't know of a single school that offers all 10 of the gateway courses. We'll have to make choices in terms of what we support and what we, what we can't. But we'll, by the time a student graduates middle school, if they're with Project Lead the Way, they'll take six out of the 10.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you. Okay, preliminary tax levy presentation, Chris?
So tonight, we have the estimated 2018 tax levy that will be published in the newspaper with the estimated amounts for the public hearing and final approval of the 2018 tax levy at the December 18th board meeting. I always show the timeline every year. The thing that's always a little bit confusing is that the, the calendar year 2017 CPI impacts the 2018 tax levy, which the taxes come in, in calendar year 2019. So we always, we're talking about 2018 taxes are collected in June and September of 19, which is actually June, June is the very last month of fiscal year 19, but then the September taxes are fiscal year 20. So there you have it. But the, this CPI of 2.1, as I said, was the 2017. CPI came out in January of 2018. And for the last five years, CPI has averaged 1.44%. That's, so that's the inflationary amount that the, that our tax extension can be increased. And then we know that new construction is exempt. This just shows the, the, when, when existing EAV is going down, the tax rate is going up. When existing EAV is going up, the tax rate is going down. We are currently in the left, or the, the one where the existing EAV is going up and the tax rate is going down. So that's, and this again shows that same inverse relationship between the EAV and the tax rate. And so your increase in your tax rate does not equal your property tax bill increase. We, that, that, sometimes we get questions about that when the tax rate and the taxes increases aren't the same. So this, this tax levy, we have the 2.1 CPI. And then right now, when we do the levy, there are unknown factors, EAV and new construction. The total EAV increase really only affects the tax rate. It's not that important of a number for the new construction, for the, for the tax levy. The new construction is the important number. This shows the, the historical new construction. As you can see, it's increasing. Last year, part of what fed into the new construction EAV was that TIF II. That's the TIF that was up on Lake Street that became TIF V. That, that increased our new construction number last year. This year, I talked to York Township Assessor. They have a preliminary estimate, which they always say is very preliminary, and not to hold them to it, so I won't do that. But it's, they estimated 36 million. Addison Township estimated 7 million. And then we have the TIF I, downtown TIF, which will, is terminated. And so that, the, when, when TIF I originated, it was at 13 million in EAV. It is up to 41, as of last year's, 2017's EAV, it was up to 28 million. Or I'm sorry, 41 million. So the difference between the 41 million and the 13 million, they call that the increment. So that was 28 million in increment, which will come back on the tax rolls. So I have estimated it at 30 million. But again, that's a rough estimate because I was, where what we know is what was last year's EAV on the downtown TIF. So the rough estimate is new construction of 73 million. In the tax levy, we, we, we put in an extra amount to cover an additional 20 million because we don't know how accurate that 73 million will be. It might be more. But no matter what amount the district levies, the county will only extend the increase allowable under the tax cap. The levy is just a request. So this is the, the format that in, that we've talked about in the finance committee. We have last year's extension and rates. This year, this is the levy that we are estimating. And as I said, we are estimating based on the 93 million. And that's the levy with a 5.71 increase in the capped funds, an overall increase of 5.32%. That's, that's the levy. But the far-right information with the estimated extension and rates, that was based on the 73 million. So we're, we're estimating it to come in at 4.93% with an overall increase of 4.74%. Okay. That's the estimated tax levy.
John?
Can you just explain for people watching about the whole concept of the advertising and, and why we do that?
So, so the truth in taxation law is if you are levying more than 5%, you need to post in the newspaper and then have a public hearing at the final, the day of the, the tax levy approval, which will be in December. So these estimated, the estimated tax levy will be in the newspaper, and so that, so that there will be a public hearing in December. But in this case, our levy is more than 5%. In past years, we've always done the same process of truth in taxation when it wasn't over 5%. So this time it is over 5%, and we're going through the same process we've always gone through.
And this would be, the first time it would be over 5% in anyone's memory.
I couldn't, I couldn't find one to go back and look at the language when we've actually been over five. It's been a long time.
And the reason is, is that all these properties that had their EAV frozen for our, for purposes of our levy, not the city's levy, but for purposes of our levy, had their EAV frozen under the TIF since 1986, are now coming back on to the tax rolls for one year and getting frozen again for another-
23 years.
23 years.
Correct.
With the new TIF.
Right.
And so it raises the number higher than you might expect. But this has been the payoff since 1986.
Correct.
All right. Do you want to make a motion and if we want to question again?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution regarding the estimated amounts necessary to be levied for the year 2018 and the notice of the proposed tax increase for publication in the Elberst, Elmhurst Suburban Life.
I second. Any discussion, questions? All right, go ahead.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stefen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no nays, a motion passes. Item B, there will be no action tonight on item B under superintendent's agenda. And we can move on to superintendent's communication innovation team report.
Okay, so I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. I've spoken to this a couple of times recently, but we had our first meeting on Sunday, October 28th. And what we decided to do is focus on interdisciplinary for our action plans for three grade-level spans, elementary, middle school, and high school. The rationale there was that it was kind of consistent with some of the things that we're doing with rigor relevance and the six Cs. So we thought that it, it would be something that we could do that would be a natural fit for us. But also by approaching it a certain way, kind of accelerate our work in that area in terms of breaking down content barriers and looking at how we can measure performance in some of those areas and truly getting to more rigor in our curriculum. So we also, though, want to increase the district's focus on behavioral health. And as you know, I believe we have an increasing amount of stress that our students experience, starting at very young ages. It manifests itself in different ways, and it's becoming a national epidemic. And this cohort is intended to take a look at various different types of innovative practices across the country and use support structures through university, university research centers and national data organizations so that, that we can kind of learn from each other and then ultimately become a model of innovation that other people around the country can look at. So I, I would let Jim speak to that some more if he wants, but we have another meeting coming up in a week or so with our innovation team to plan some next steps. So, so I just, since we, since we came off our first event, I thought I would include some information on that in your packet.
I think you did an eloquent job. I have nothing to add.
All right.
Just want to make the mistake of not giving you the chance. Appreciate that.
That was your moment.
So the, the next item on there is just referendum update. We met with a core planning team, including architects, construction workers, communication. Bev was represented, Todd Schmidt, of course, from facilities, and Chris and I to start to, to refine the timeline and take a look at the specific work that needs to be done during Phase One of the project. And so what we were thinking about doing is coming back to the board in December. And, and the exact way that you would want to do that, I don't know. If you want to have a special meeting or try to include it as part of the December meeting, is not completely my decision to make. But I do think that, that it would be helpful if we could revisit that timeline and the specifics of what needs to be done so that we can- and the specifics of what needs to be done so that we can work through the logistics of the board about how we put into place the accountability structures that need to be there, that the board totally understands, kind of the timing of when various different things are going to occur that need to be done to get the construction launched in a timely manner. And when the bids go out, the various different types of other internal subcommittees that we think we might need to utilize to move toward the transition of students, the staffing, the all-day kindergarten implementation, and all the work that needs to be done and just make sure that everybody's kind of on the same page without too much time going by so that we can then also get a communication out to the community that explains to them what they can expect over the next couple months and a couple years and, and also the areas where, where there are opportunities to be involved and what that looks like in terms of input and feedback throughout the process. So that's one thing that I wanted to state. I could take some questions, but I think another thing that I really think we need to take some time to do is issue a couple thank yous. First and foremost, to the community for its continued support of education in Elmhurst. And then specifically, a couple individuals who were instrumental. Kara, who co-chaired the Focus 205 Committee and that facilitating team, and, and a lot of people may not make the connection, but really this work has been going on for four years and it's been a lot of people and a lot of work to get to this point. Also Emily Bastido, former board member who chaired the ballot initiative committee with her executive board and, and just an army of committed volunteers that essentially put their life on hold for three months to get this done. And then I think that the support of our business community went a long way toward helping this be successful and reaching all of the people in Elmhurst, and I think that John Quigley and Ken Bartels of the Chamber were very instrumental in getting support from that segment of the community. So too many thank yous, really, but I think appropriate that some people are, are mentioned, at least from my perspective, with, with my deepest and sincerest gratitude. So that's, that's, that's where we're at.
So, yeah, go ahead, John.
I just wanted to thank you for your work as well in accomplishing this. So thanks to everybody from you and then thanks to you from all of us in getting this done, Dave. In, just wanted to ask, it was a very, very public process in making this happen, and I think we can attribute a lot of the success of the referendum, the final vote was the result of having such a public process. I just wondered if you can kind of outline for me some of the thoughts and maybe things already in motion in terms of keeping this as a public process to not only update the community as to where we are and what's happening and what steps and what's getting approved, but also the pieces where their input is necessary, essential to making the finished products even better, so.
Yeah, I'll share with you a couple preliminary thoughts from our meeting this morning, and you know, these are the things that we kind of need to come to agreement on in December. So I, I'll say this without, you know, trying to make assumptions that, that it's going to be exactly one way, but some of the things we talked about are kind of a oversight committee related to the actual finances and construction process, and we have some ideas about how that could possibly look based on your preferences. And then a committee that has to do with some of the instructional types of approaches that would be individual to the various different school sites depending on, on the construction and the nature of the project. So there would be parents, teachers, and you know, White has a process that they've used that's been successful for getting involvement and feedback and input on some of those kinds of things. Then some specific additional subcommittees that I mentioned about specific aspects of the implementation of the project, like the staffing and, and some of those things I referenced before, all-day kindergarten. Then also some additional committees of specialized people so that, you know, perhaps media specialists when you're designing media centers or the work that's coming through the Technology Committee to take a look at, at different technology prototypes that we want. And, and so there, there'll be groups of people like that that need to be involved on the front end of Edison, even if it's, even though Edison is only one school, because some of those things would be replicated in certain ways throughout the process for consistency purposes at other sites. And then the whole idea of the public reporting process, so the various different things we would do with dedicated websites, information that would be available at schools and, and how we would give updates on the project are various other things that we talked about. So we, we talked about having community involvement, both generally from a district standpoint, whether it's the, the finance piece that, you know, community members maybe with some expertise could have some level of involvement in, in being part of a board committee, but also then at the individual school sites, the local school communities, having opportunities to weigh in on different issues. So it's like multiple, like for, for the next five or six years, many, many opportunities.
That's great. Thanks for, for laying that out for us.
So I just wanted to take a minute and I think, you know, as a board, we would like to say thank you to the community. We put a question on the ballot in August and you gave us the answer last Tuesday, and it was a solid yes. Please move ahead and, you know, improve our facilities and you are entrusting us with your tax dollars, and I just would like to say thank you. That is, it is huge, and we are very grateful to be able to move the district forward in the, in that capacity. I also want to take a minute to recognize that the people sitting beside me laid the groundwork for this to happen. Nothing like this happens in a few months or even a couple years, and I know that years ago what our district looked like, and it's just slowly, slowly, you know, the groundwork gets laid, things get improved, things get moved forward, and it just seemed to all come together and, you know, we all hung together and did the hard work to get it ready to go to the community, and that was no small feat. And I am honored to serve this community with the rest of you, and so thank you for that opportunity. And then I just have to take a minute, I know Dave said, you know, some thank yous, but you know, we had public endorsements from a lot of groups in the community that we are so grateful for. The teachers, you know, I know worked hard to help this become a reality and also endorsed us publicly, and you know, some of that takes courage, and we are grateful for the people that were willing to step up and support us in that public way. And I have to say thank you to Bev and her department, the Communications Department, worked hard, and it's hard to believe that she took the baton from Malia in July and carried it through. And it is hard to remember a time when you weren't here, maybe because you've been here every day, but we, we are really grateful. It, it was a huge undertaking, and to just hit the ground in a sprint was quite a thing to do, and you did it well. So thank you for that. And all the rest of the administration that I know you spent lots of extra time and our principals who did tours and answered questions or helped people get their questions answered, that was a very important piece. And then I have to take a minute and thank the Superintendent. You have worked just incredibly hard, relentlessly hard, to share this vision for our facilities and ultimately for the learning for our students, and we are grateful, and the community is grateful, and the students don't know that they're grateful, but they, but they will, you know, generations of students will be benefactor, be benefactors. So I just wanted to say that long thank you, you know, and we're just really, I'm excited and I think probably everyone else is, to start working on the future. So, thank you.
Jim?
I had one thing. I mean, I, I think the community, through their overwhelming approval, showed a great deal of confidence in our administration, and I think our community also, through their vote, gave us a great deal of responsibility, a humbling responsibility, to make sure that all of this money is spent very wisely, that it's, that it's well planned out, it's thought through. We owe it to the community to make sure that every dime is spent to its fullest purpose. And the community, I think, also has an expectation that the quality of education, while it's very high today in Elmhurst, will go even higher, and that is incumbent upon all of us to make sure that that happens. So I just wanted to add the other side of it as well.
That's great. All right, so let's do the Tweet of the Week.
All right. Tweet of the Week goes to Heather Bowler, who was here, as are those who, one of our Those Who Excel recipients. She is highlighting the work of the Bryan Middle School Math Team. They came in first place over the weekend at the ICCP, or we know them as IC, Math Contest, and there were 17 schools, 89 students participating in the contest, and Joe Druno placed second among all eighth grade students, and then I believe it's Lance Galdo placed first among all seventh grade students. So you can see Heather and her work, I believe her Twitter handle is @HBowler7. If you're not on Twitter, jump on, take a look, and take a look at our hashtag at NikeD205 and see all the wonderful things that our teachers are documenting and the great things that are happening in our classrooms every day. So congratulations to Heather and also to the Bryan Middle School Math Team. Way to go.
So at the Joint Annual Conference, which is coming up this weekend, the IASB, the Illinois Association of School Board, has delegates from each Illinois school board that have the opportunity to vote on various resolutions being proposed by school boards throughout the state of Illinois. Each, each resolution is originally proposed by a member district, reviewed by a 21-member Resolutions Committee, and then brought before the Delegate Assembly for any discussion and vote. The adopted resolutions have, can set the IASB's policies and establish the legislative direction of the association and its 843 member districts if or when legislation is proposed. So with this year, there are various resolutions being presented, and I'm going to turn, we have a delegate, Margaret is our delegate, and I'm going to turn it over to her.
All right, thank you. There are, as Kara mentioned, there are eight, there are actually eight issues that are being discussed. There are four resolutions and a reaffirmation of an existing position, a new belief statement, and two amended belief statements. So there are eight issues actually, and the Resolution Committee makes a recommendation on how they are suggesting that there be a vote for each of them. Of these eight, item number one and item number three, the Resolution Committee is recommending that we vote no on, essentially because item one, two, and three are the same issue. Okay? So while there are eight, I'm only going to ask that we vote on, on six of them. Okay? And I am going to start from the bottom up. I will read the, these are amended belief statements, and I'll read it, and the response is either we can support it or oppose it. But first, let me read it, and these, these are going to be the direct words from the, these are going to be the direct words from the Illinois Association of School Boards. So item eight, it's amending belief statement two, which is the student voter registration. The Illinois Association of School Board believes school administration and faculty should be composed of persons supporting the principles of constitutional government because schools should continue with vigor their programs for giving young citizens a clear understanding of the principles of the American way of life and a desire to make these principles prevail in their own lives and in the life of their country. This is the amended piece. Further, the association believes in the value of student nonpartisan civic responsibility, including the importance of student voter registration. That is the amending belief statement for student voter registration, and we are to, as a board, either agree to support that or to oppose that. We can do, if there's discussion on it or there's more information that's needed, we can do that, or we can just do a simple vote in yea or nay, or hands raised or not. And John, you had a question or discussion?
Just procedurally. We don't have an agenda item for voting on here, we got communications, so probably you can gather the consensus from the responses, but I just, you know, we, we're not...
Right, we can't vote.
So, but, but we'll be as clear as we can.
So I appreciate that. So while we can't vote, there needs to be a vote that is, I will be assessing, so based off your comments, I will decide what you're saying, and I will vote accordingly.
I have a question, too. There's a belief statement, like what, what does that mean, a belief statement? We've never voted on anything like this, so our board has never gone to the delegation and, like, last year we didn't go. So this is something new.
Well, actually, no, so, so there, there's been a delegation, there, there's always a delegation, and while we haven't had a formal vote, there have people been gone, people have gone to that section, so we have always been a participant, so you're right. And the reason we are having this discussion here is there, as emails and public comments suggest, there was quite a bit of communication around one particular resolution. So there needs to be, there needs to be a discussion, and based off that discussion, as a delegate for District 205 Board of Education, I need to go and place a vote one way or the other. That will be based off the consensus of this meeting.
I'm just asking about the belief statements, because we haven't done this before.
Okay.
So what, what exactly, like where does the belief statement go? Like what does the IASB do with a belief statement?
Okay, so there are, thank you for that question and clarification of that question. There are currently, there are 15 belief statements, okay? So currently, there are 15 belief statements, and let me just talk about the belief statements. Belief statements are used to, and I want to be, I want to use the exact wording of the Illinois Association of School Board, so I don't mistake that. That is how they go about assessing and deciding how. So here, types of resolutions. Resolutions may be either in the form of... Resolutions may be either in the form of position statement or a belief statement. Position statements address issues affecting or concerning local school boards of education. They direct the association's advocacy efforts. Belief statements express significant values commonly held by local boards of education. They may or may not call for action to be taken by the association. So it is expressing a value that would be commonly held. That's the definition of the belief statement.
Say, take action or not take action?
Because belief statements, you would have to keep up with it.
Yeah.
But typically, belief statements are not taken on. It says, "may or may not call for action to be taken." So taking off the belief statement, there would have to be a resolution associated with the belief statement for an action to be taken. So there were some questions on this student voter registration. Is there any discussion on this?
I don't know.
I'm just going to throw something out there.
All right.
Okay. So this is, you know, we are the board. We represent the community. We represent the values of the community, and we're in constant communication with them, right? So if I look at this values, this additional statement that the IASB Resolutions Committee is proposing for the whole state, they're adding about student voter registration. We do that at York. So we.
We support that already.
So it's a given. We know the answer to that. We're not going to, we're not going to go against what we do.
All right.
So that's how we vote, based on what our practices are.
Well, that's our discussion. You're right. Absolutely. So thank you, Karen. Thank you for making that, and for making that simple. What I am trying to do, since I am, I am trying not to express my particular opinion, since I have to gather all of this information. The next amended belief statement is regarding mental health services. It says, "The Illinois Association of School Board believes that schools should provide a safe and secure environment for all students. School board members and staff should try to protect students from the effects of bullying." The amended piece adds, "discrimination and violence." And then it continues on, "and offer appropriate instruction to improve intergroup relations and to promote peaceful resolution to conflict." Here's another amended portion. "Further, the association urges the state of Illinois and the U.S. State Congress to invest in and support comprehensive, coordinated, and collaborative mental health resources to address these social-emotional issues leading to safe schools and the achievement of academic success." That's the resolution. That's the belief statement.
So then, what I would say about this, too, is I know, from being on the board and being a parent at the district, that we not only believe in this and have practices, but we have enhanced them significantly.
Yes.
So that's how we would represent our community.
All right. Thank you, Karen.
Unless somebody disagrees.
We're moving, we're moving through. All right. Item number six. This is a new belief statement. This is local authority in safety practices. The belief statement reads, "The Illinois Association of School Board believes that schools should provide a safe and secure environment for all students and staff. Decisions of school safety drills, plans, and procedures should be made at the local level utilizing evidence-based practices that maximize resources and effectiveness, and by soliciting input from local emergency responders, resulting in fewer physical, emotional, and psychological risks to students and staff." And I'll note, I'll make one note on here why this was noted. It was noted because of the new guidance on armed assailant training that all our, our schools went through, and they are just suggesting that we should, the schools should be aware of how they implement that, based off whether it's elementary, middle school, or high school. So that is some background on that new belief statement.
Can I ask, can I ask a question about that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So correct me if, if I misunderstood this. I understood it to be that we want to have local control of that. We want to be able, you know what I mean? That we, that it's the local authority in safety practices.
So you're absolutely right, Karen. So let me read this specific statement. "In summary, several organizations with expertise of school environments and school safety have advocated for balancing safety measures effectiveness with ample consideration of the emotional and psychological well-being of students and staff. They also advise that local school leaders and experts will best determine this balance." So that was the summary on, particularly, was, it was noted that what is done at elementary level versus what's done at a middle school level versus what is done at a high school level may be different.
And so Dave and Chris, you all have.
We've moved to two active shooter drills at every school this year for the first time. We used to do one, and the, they are coordinated by the Elmhurst Police Department, are basically our school resource officers, are, work with the principals on those active shooter drills, and we do two per year now. We, so we, we are going beyond what is required now. One is required. We are doing two at every school.
You're too responsible for that group of all the, you know, people throughout the district and community on behalf of those procedures and practices.
Yes. I chair the committee, but we have the Police Department and the Fire Department on the committee.
We also, we also do a tabletop exercise with our leadership team in, in the spring. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different things that we do in that regard.
You're also cognizant of the, I don't know if mental health issues is, is the right term or not, but some kids are left with deep impressions from these drills, deep impressions that, that danger is actually imminent, when statistically, it is far from that. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're aware of what some of these drills, the impressions they leave on our kids.
Our drills don't involve any, any weapons being fired or anything like that. There's no, then, we always announce that it is just a drill. And that is announced over the loudspeaker every time. It's clearly explained about that. But I, I mean, that's the way we do the drills right now.
That was three of them. We have three left. So we're halfway through this. Thank you for your patience. This is, those were the belief statements. We're now going to, the question to reaffirm an existing position on financing public education. This particularly deals with, okay, financing public education. And it's position statement 2.27, charter school funding. "Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall urge adoption of legislation which would create a new methodology for the funding of state-authorized charter schools which would not have a negative financial impact on the host district. With respect to state-authorized virtual charter schools, further limit the withholding of state funds from the host school districts in proportion to the per pupil expenditure used for building, maintenance, classroom supplies, transportation, safety and security, and other costs unique to brick and mortar schools. For all state-authorized charter schools, require that proofing of continuing enrollment and attendance be submitted quarterly with prorated funds to the host school district upon withdrawal of students from the charter school." That is a reaffirmation. They felt the need to reaffirm that existing position. We can support, oppose, or take no action.
I think we're at little risk of the state imposing a charter school in our area, and I think that if they do, it should be paid for by the state. So I think this comports with my view about how we should respond if charter schools
This is a new resolution. It is regarding energy saving, funding, and borrowing. It is resolution number four. Under Financing Public Education Other, "Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall recommend to the legislator, legislature, that a bill be passed that allows districts to borrow or otherwise obtain money without referendum for the sole and specific purpose of purchasing and installing energy-saving equipment relating to utility usage." That is the, that is the proposal. If you'd like some background on this, in the past, the committee, it says, "Committee agreed that school districts should have the ability to utilize school district revenues, whether obtained through existing funds or through referendum, to carry out energy-saving projects on their own." So they're talking about energy-saving projects. And not always having to go to a referendum to do that. And if we look at what we have done historically, I think that's what we've done.
I mean, the way I read this, this is an issue of whether you allow a local school board to decide to borrow money. Is that not, I mean, ultimately, it has no impact on us. It may give us some flexibility if we ever wanted to do it, but all you're doing is giving local authority to local officials. Is that?
That is, yes, specific to energy-related projects. So they're saying they can borrow money, or they can use their existing operating funds or other things like that for energy-related.
But it's up to each community to decide.
Yes.
What their value is and whether they want to pay for it.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. All right. So here's the last one, and I am going to read this in entire, in its entirety. It is, under Board Operations and Duties, it's titled, "Student Safety and Protection." "Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support and advocate for legislation which provides local school boards the option of developing student safety and protection plans, which may include administrators, faculty, and other staff who have completed a state-approved training course above and beyond concealed carrying training. One, who have passed the multiple, multiple background checks and qualifications required for a concealed carry license. Two, or have current concealed carry license issued under the Law Enforcement Officer's Safety Act. Only staff who fulfill all requirements listed would be eligible as an active and armed part of the student safety and protection plan upon being granted Board of Approval." Statement of rationale, "Every year, concern for student safety grows with more tragic events in our nation's school. The safety and protection of our students and school staff is one of the top priorities in each district. Districts are looking for new ways to keep those who enter our, enter our building safe. One proposal is to allow local school districts the option to have armed staff in their building." Current, and I'm skipping a paragraph, it says, "Illinois state law currently does not allow for local control of school boards in determining if they want to include, if they want to, I'm sorry. Illinois state law currently does not allow for local control of school boards in determining if they want to include an option for trained and armed staff to protect their students and fellow staff members in an emergency situation until law enforcement arrives. Our neighbors, Missouri, Indiana, and Kentucky, allow districts to decide what is best for their communities." And it goes on quite a bit more. The Resolutions Committee rationale, "Similar to other proposals, this resolution calls for the association to support and advocate for local options for schools, including for armed district personnel subject to, to training, background checks, licensure, and Board approval. However, this resolution calls for locally-approved training above and beyond that required for concealed carry."
So I, several years ago, I read through the IASB Policy Manual and the Resolution Manual, and evidently, not too many folks in Springfield have, because I don't, I don't see many of that, much of that enacted. This is an issue that I think's been thrown on our plate, and I understand where you guys are coming from, but it's, it's not a discussion that we wanted to have. It's not a discussion I think our community supports. It's not an issue I believe our community supports. "That said, I will not profess to understand the needs and perspectives of other districts, particularly those downstate, and I view this primarily as a local control issue, and in fact, one that might conflict with our statement number six." You add to that, that no matter which way the vote on this resolution goes, it, it remains entirely under control of our community and our school board as to what happens in our schools. And like I said, I don't believe our community particularly supports this. That said, so how do you, how do you reconcile those two issues? And in my mind, at this point, given what we have, and like Karen said, starting to work on the future, I would recommend abstaining or not taking an action or a position on this. I think we've done our work.
Thank you, Chris. Are there, is there other discussion?
First, I want to thank my friends who've suffered through my repeated emails, struggling with exactly what you're saying, Chris, which is this idea that we traditionally support local control. And, you know, I think back, I think about the important things that have happened to education statewide and recently, and they've happened when people have come together. And particularly through IASB, I'm thinking about, what is SB1, Karen? Was that the one that, that had one negative vote in the General Assembly? Would think of that. I'm thinking about evidence-based financing. Again, consensus sponsored by Senator Menard down in Bunker Hill, and the whole IASB sang in chorus, and I'm kind of saddened by the fact that this is tearing things apart. And so I'm struggling with exactly what you said, and I'm comparing, though, responsibility to here in Elmhurst and responsibility to them. And I think the local control thing gives way to what's best for Elmhurst, and I think what would be best for Elmhurst is if the law didn't change. I frankly, personally, don't think there should be anybody armed in York High School except a sworn peace officer with a long pension in front of him, or her. And I want to see that person providing the protection. And so, given another layer of support for what I believe's right for Elmhurst, I would suggest a vote yes, but I also understand that a no, a not voting, which you're proposing, accomplishes the same result. We are not supporting a law change. So my position is, Margaret? I'd go either no, or I'd go not voting. But I think just turning to what's best for Elmhurst, a yes vote is now warranted.
Thank you very much, John. Is there? Is there other discussion on that topic?
I guess I agree with John and, and Chris. I, I don't think there should be guns in our schools in Elmhurst. I think that's a bad idea. But there's a lot more in here that is beyond, I mean, it's very complex and I just want to make my voice heard that I, I don't want any guns in our schools in Elmhurst.
And I will continue to support what's just been said. And in fact, what was said at public comment, I mean, it's just common sense. The more guns you have around, the more mishaps can happen. It makes no sense. Plus layer on top of that, that our voters just gave us a mandate to implement a far more effective system for making sure we do not have intruders with guns in our schools and that is safe and secure entrances, that they just voted to approve to fund. And it's incumbent on us, by the way, to do that as quickly as possible. But yeah, I mean, the common sense rule is, I could not support arming teachers, faculty, staff, anybody but a police officer in our school with a gun. But, you know, to impose our will upon, you know, what's right for us is what's right for us. And, and local control and local voice is, is very important. So, you know, I, I'm with Chris and I, I can't support it, but I don't want to make other, I mean, I was elected to represent this school district. I can't impose my will upon other elected officials that were elected to, to take care of their school districts.
Let me just, I, I guess what I'd say is a no vote because Linda's point, I thought, was compelling. Our kids are going to go to these other schools. I don't want our kids going to a school where there's guns. And I appreciate they want to protect their kids that way and that's a belief. I don't share that belief. I believe what you're saying, Jim. They don't belong in our schools. And if our kids ever have a chance of going in there, even in the slightest case, then I'd say, no, I don't want the law changed.
I think the law is okay the way it stands.
I, yes.
Thank you very much for the board for having this discussion. I know this was different than how we've done things in the past. Perhaps it should be a trend. This was a very important issue, but there are other issues that come up. So maybe we should always plan to have this discussion before our, before we go to the conference. So we would vote united. I also want to thank everyone who came out for this important discussion and stayed three hours to hear it. So thank you very much for adding your voice, saying what the community wants. And I believe I have the information needed to make a recommendation for the board of Elmhurst District 205. Thank you.
Thank you. We just have two, or were there any other communications? Sorry. Yeah, Jim?
Oh, I have a request to our administration. As we spend our weekend, this coming weekend, trying to become better board members and become further educated, there's, there's a lot of, for people that are here, there's a lot of individual sessions that occur this weekend at the state school board conference. I am particularly curious if our administration has any recommendations for sessions that the board attends that you feel are particularly relevant to our district. So I'm just soliciting, you know, just send us, if you see a session that you say, you know what, I think this is particularly pertinent to 205 and it's a good opportunity for board members to become educated, please just send the board an email and say, this looks like a really good session to me. So I appreciate the guidance.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Well, I will, I will take a closer look on Friday and try, at, at the itinerary and try to, you know, from a board member perspective as it relates to what's going on in our district and statewide, try to see if, if there is anything that sticks out that looks like it might be particularly helpful for you.
Otherwise you do risk us coming back, you know, all having attended some session that.
We, we do kind of have a rule never to let any of you go anywhere by yourself, but.
You should act as our handlers the entire weekend.
All right. If there's nothing else, we have a meeting, regular scheduled meeting on Tuesday, November 27th here at District 205 Center at 7:30. And Tuesday, December 18th at 7:30 here at District 205 Center. And if there's nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting.